Good evening. I would like to call the City Council Meeting to Order. Thank you so much. We're really excited to have everyone here at our City Council Meeting tonight. Let's go ahead and start with our roll call meeting.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. And next, we have the privilege of having our local Boy Scout troop here earning their citizenship in the community merit badge. And if you all could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we would greatly appreciate it.
Scout attention, room attention, scouts salute. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice having so many people in uniform in our chambers today. I love it. Are there any citizens' requests to speak to City Council on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention that tomorrow is the regular monthly meeting of the Cotter Superfund Site Community Advisory Group. We mostly meet online most months, but we have an in-person meeting tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Abbey Event Center. We're going to have various agency folks from both state and federal agencies there in person. And hope to not only learn more up-to-date information about the health risk assessment that's going to be done, but also find out more immediately how site security and operations are going to be handled at this point. The last we had heard, the company that owns the site was carrying out minimal operations through April 15th. And now we're a couple of days later, so we're anxious to find out what's going to be the latest on that. Of course, the meetings are open to the public and they are also, it'll be a hybrid meeting online also, and on Facebook Live. So anyone who would like to attend, 4:00 PM at the Abbey.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention that the city is having a blood drive on Wednesday, May 3rd, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. That is open to the public, and we encourage folks who are able to to come down and give blood.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have the general government meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. We're going to be talking about the US-50 Pedestrian Crossing Project. We'll get an update on that, as well as talk about forming the Red Canyon Park Trail Committee. Nope.
Yep. It's the Vision Committee Meeting, and it will be at 5:00 PM.
Sorry. Thank you. I'm on the wrong agenda.
That's all right. We will have an annual report from the Police Department and selection of Water Committee members.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Also, this Friday, the City of Canyon City is hosting a cleanup day. Is that right? Friday, the 21st? I actually had to do a lot of scrolling and searching to find this, so I was wondering if maybe Kristy could push out and do a little bit more boosting for this. So this Friday, from 8:00 to 3:00, there's going to be dumpsters at Constantino's and, I believe, at Harrison School.
Harrison School.
And then 9:00 to 3:00, you can bring in electronics for both of those things.
And the electronics will be at the Constantino's site only?
Only at Constantino's. Good to know. But it'll be nice if we can kind of get that freshened up. And I think there must be a lot of people thinking about spring cleaning and making things better. Because Canyon City Noon Lions Club, they've noticed, as I have, that there's a lot of trash on Highway 50. And so they're sponsoring a cleanup for Highway 50, at least the north side of Highway 50, this Saturday. They're inviting the public to join them, meeting at the Walgreens parking lot this Saturday at 8:30, if anyone would like to join it. We really need some extra love on our Highway 50. I don't know, something we need to be paying attention to as well. But I'm really grateful that as good as citizens, they're just taking it under their belt and getting things taken care of to make our community a better place. Are there any other announcements? Okay, then let's move on to our police officer recognition. I'd like to invite Chief Schick to please address the council.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as always, thank you for taking time in your busy agenda to recognize our police officers' service excellence in the community. A little delayed recognition, but tonight we're recognizing Officers Gary Wade and Zach Letabor for their apprehension of a escaped DOC inmate that we had back in February. February 13th, convicted felon escaped from the Arrowhead Prison in East Canyon Correctional Complex. Shortly thereafter, after the alarm sounded, while assisting another officer on a DUI investigation, Officer Wade and Letabor noticed an individual in the area, trying desperately to avoid eye contact with him, became suspicious and engaged the individual. And despite being provided false information, we're able to positively identify the escaped inmate, and we're able to take him into custody. So we're really appreciative and proud of these guys for taking the initiative to follow up on this individual and get him back in custody. The Director for the Department of Corrections came down the week after Director Persons and expressed his gratitude. That happened to be Super Bowl night, so he was awfully happy that he didn't have to leave his Super Bowl company to come to Canyon and find this inmate. So just wanted to recognize them and thank them for their service and give them a certificate of recognition. So we would like to present them with these certificates and give you an opportunity to talk to them, to thank them.
Absolutely. I just wanted to also say that I was at the prison wardens' meeting at the ADX last week. It was a conference room that was absolutely packed full with all of the prison wardens and many other administration. And they did senior praises at that meeting as well.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. So we're really, really grateful that you keep our community safe and protected and that you are on the ball and you're just doing all the right things. Thank you so much. We would love to get a picture and shake your hand, if that's okay. Yeah.
Warm them up, warm them up!
Let's do it! Next, we have our proclamation for Arbor Day, which is April 28th, 2023. There will be a special event for celebrating Arbor Day, and I see that Rex Brady is online. Rex, if you want to come on and talk to us about it, that'd be awesome.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep. You're on.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. This year Canyon City has been named Tree City USA for the 43rd consecutive year. So we decided to pull out all the stops and have a big celebration this year. The celebration will take place at Centennial Park on April 28th at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. This year, it's going to be special. We've got 45 kids joining us from the Kids Club. We are going to break out all of our parks' forestry equipment. We'll have the log loader, we'll have the high ranger, we'll have demonstrations on the chipper, and all the equipment in the forestry industry. And of course, we'll have a tree planting, maybe two. Obviously, the ever-popular cookies and punch. So we invite everybody out. All the public is invited. This year is going to be very special. We'll have staff on hand to answer any questions they have. And hopefully, this year will kind of be the beginning of tradition, getting kids out and teaching them the importance of trees in our community and on our planet, that matter. So everybody is invited. The public is invited out to Centennial Park on April 28th at 2:00 PM to join the celebration, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Rex. We are really proud that Canyon City is an arbor city, and you're a really important part of making that happen.
Thank you.
And also, all the tree trimming that you all are having to do with all of this dry winter and the late snow we had last spring. And we really appreciate you taking the health of our urban forest very seriously.
Well, thank you. It's a big job. We've got about 6,000 trees that are on public right-of-ways that we take care of with a new staff, basically of three people take care of that. So it's a big job, and our guys do a great job.
Awesome. Well, we do have a proclamation to read. Kathy, how about we start on your side first, and then we'll all work our way down this way.
It's the joy of new technology, so what can I say? National Arbor Day, April 28th, 2023. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and...
Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and...
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and...
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and...
Whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and...
Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and...
Whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and...
Whereas the City of Canyon City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways.
Now therefore, the Mayor, Ashley Smith, of Canyon City, of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, does hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as National Arbor Day in the City of Canyon City, Colorado, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program, and...
Further, urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated the 17th day of April, 2023.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations, Rex, and to your entire team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to say one thing, if I could, please.
Absolutely.
We've got, I wanted to congratulate John Hague and Jesse Young. Both are now certified arborists. So that was a huge, huge deal for these guys. They studied and studied and studied for months on end. And this test that they took to deserve this recognition is no piece of cake. It's a very, very intense, involved test, and they both passed it with flying colors, so I'd like to congratulate them again.
Yeah, well done. They definitely represent Canyon City very well. We appreciate their dedication and hard work and the customer service that they provide to Canyon City. Ryan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think it was back in 2013, right after the Royal Gorge Fire, we had a forestry department all the way up until that point. And, you know, because of the loss of revenues from the Royal Gorge Bridge, we had to make some cuts back then. And one of those casualties was our forestry department. City Council and the budget a couple of years ago reinvested into building up that forestry department again. And, you know, we were very lucky to have a team and have folks that have gone through these certifications and that are out there taking care of the trees. And, you know, there's a lot of catch-up to do from that span. But, you know, I want the citizens to know that they're out there doing the work, trying to get those trees cleaned up as best they can.
Excellent. Thank you again to all of you. And Ryan, we are ready for the consent agenda, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for City Council meeting on April 3rd, the general government meeting on April 5th, and the special meeting, which was the Energy Committee meeting, on March 27th. 8B is to authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Vivid Engineering for 2A street reconstruction work. 8C, staff's going to ask to move this to discussion. It's to award the bid for 2623 2A Reynolds Avenue Reconstruction to Pyramid Construction in an amount not to exceed $2,011,288.82. 8D is to award bid 3223 meter pits and lids to Dana Keppner in an amount not to exceed $27,000. 8E awards bid 41-23 C. Revitalization Main Street Grant Program Downtown Park benches and bike racks to RJ Thomas Manufacturing Company in an amount not to exceed $16,948.12. 8F is to receive and file monthly budget summary for February. 8G is to receive and file cash dispersments. And 8H is also to receive and file cash dispersments and P-card dispersments.
Do we have any questions for Ryan on this consent agenda?
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions regarding 8B, the professional services agreement with Vivid Engineering.
Okay. We're going to call Leo Evans, our Public Works Director, up to the podium to help answer some of those.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So I do have quite a few. I noticed that this is a sole-source award for over $500,000. And I think that that is always a little disconcerting to me, because I think that it's really important to us that we have transparency and full and open competition. I think it helps us keep prices low and lets us work with a variety of entities, and also serves as a mitigation measure against fraud, waste, and abuse. So I'd like to just hear a little bit more about why we're electing to do a sole-source for this particular project. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll start with that. So the 2A project, we have a limited amount of time, and to bring in new engineers at this late stage in the game could cause quite a few delays with the timing of some of those projects. Part of, you know, we've had some turnover in the Public Works and City Engineers' office. You know, had a city engineer, and then Kim Sweringer as our first Public Works Director, and now Leo as our second Public Works Director. So we've lost some of that institutional knowledge through that process as well. So Vivid, being the engineer that's been on this project since, I believe, 2018, has a lot of that institutional knowledge built into their program and their systems and knows Canyon City well. We've been working with them well. They've been doing a good job. And their rates have gone up a little bit, but not much. We're still fairly close to where we started in 2018, as far as hourly rates. I'll pass it over to Leo to add anything additional to that.
No, I think you covered it very well. They've got a good history of it, and I came on in January. And, you know, if we were to keep these 2024 projects on schedule to start right away in 2024, it would have had to been one of the first things we got underway to start that RFP process. You know, it's certainly something we can do going forward, and we did bring it to the City Council here. It is certainly a big dollar investment that we're all making in this program, and we definitely want to see those dollars used wisely, transparently, and efficiently for everyone. So in the effort of, or I guess in the name of trying to be efficient for 2024, we felt that an extension was the best way forward to keep these projects on track. But beyond that, it could certainly go out to bid, if that's the desire of the council, and, you know, take a little bit more of a traditional approach and issue an RFP and go through a selection process for these people.
I guess one point of clarification, is this an amendment to a current contract, or is this a new sole-source award?
They were our engineer of record, so this is, what we're doing here is a new contract, just continuing on with that.
So it wasn't originally the city's intention to have one engineer for the entirety of the 2A projects? Was the city's intention to bid this out every year? Is that accurate?
The first contract had additional extensions on it, and those extensions fell right in the time where we had staff turnover in the engineering department.
So does the city plan to bid this out for 2025?
If that's council's desire, we can.
I think it's, personally, I think it's always important to bid out projects, again, I think, for all of the reasons that I listed already. I certainly don't want to see delays in the 2024 2A projects. And I understand with the staff turnover in the city, it makes sense to continue on with the current contractor. You've been satisfied with their performance. Very little increases in costs since 2018 is certainly fantastic. So I don't necessarily have any hesitation about moving forward with them for 2024. But I would want to know that the city is taking this into account for your 2025 planning and process. That we're not in this situation again in April where we really don't have a choice if we want to see the projects continue as planned.
Do we know when was the last time this was actually taken out to RFP? Was it the original one, and it's been extended since? And so we're going on year six, and I'm going to reiterate with Amy that this is a really big dollar amount, and I think that it is appropriate to take it back to RFP, just for transparency and good governance of our dollars. I mean, unless there was some time where we want to hire a firm, as, you know, that's been talked about, as having like an engineering firm as, you know, a part of the institution, but that, we would need to make that an official thing instead of just extending the contract every year.
And, yeah, and a lot of the work that we do is project-based. So we, you know, we do have different engineering firms working on different projects throughout, you know, depending on, you know, whether it's a water project or a streets project, you know, traffic project, so absolutely.
Usually, I thought it was like you could extend it for like three years, and you had to go to RFP. And so we've doubled that. I think it's really important we do that. So just, and you'll be well-seasoned and ready for it.
No excuses next time.
Yeah. I did want to say, since you are, you've only been here a couple of months, when they do the design for College Avenue from 9th to 15th, and maybe someone has mentioned to you this already, but I just want to make sure that our high school administration have really passionately asked us to include traffic calming features by the high school. There have been a lot of issues with speeding cars and reckless driving, and would really appreciate any kind of traffic calming we could provide in that area for the safety of our students. And this would be the perfect time to hopefully do that.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks. I have several more questions about this particular project. So in the scope of services, for some of the 2A streets, it includes additional sidewalks. It does not, it includes the addition of sidewalks where there are not currently sidewalks. For College, it does not? And it's obviously a bit of a patchwork right now, and given the locations of our schools, I think it's really important that we do have sidewalk continuity on College in particular. Is there a reason why sidewalks have been added for some of the streets, but not College, at this particular juncture for this engineering contract?
I believe that would go to your first point of, we include it for the streets that don't have any sidewalk on them at all. And then pieces like College where there is a patchwork, we incorporate that into the design. We try to at least maintain one continuous run of sidewalk on one side of the street as a minimum, with a goal to get it on both sides of the street where possible. So I'd have to look at College a little closer. I feel like it's on both sides of the street from 9th Street heading east for part of the way, maybe up to like 12th, 13th, and then it kind of gets patchy, like you said, where there's a piece on this side, a piece on that side. And it definitely breaks apart, and there may not even be any sidewalk in that last block from 14th to 15th. So, yes, it will be included in the design in the best way we can fit it in there.
Sorry, I think I'm not entirely clear. Is there a reason why it's been, is it problematic that it's not included in this particular contract?
Oh, no. No, there's always incidental sidewalk work with any of these jobs we do. They'll have to redo the ramps to meet new ADA standards, so it's more a matter of, is it a big piece of the scope or a small piece of the scope?
Okay.
It's not problematic.
So it is the city's intention to have sidewalks?
Yes.
Wonderful. And then I just had, one more. With regard to the cost proposal, what was included in our packet has the rates, and it says that those rates apply to items 1 and 2. There do not appear to be rates that are included for items 3 and 4. I understand that those, that the rates that have been quoted are maximum not to exceed prices. However, if there aren't labor rates, I'm wanting a little bit more clarification on that. Thanks.
Yep. So they will use, for the work that Vivid does themselves, they will use those same labor rates to do progress billings up to that maximum amount. So as they work on a geotechnical report, we would get an invoice monthly that says this person worked eight hours on that report at such a rate, and so on and so on. And then we add that up and compare it to that maximum price and the progress as it goes.
So are items 3 and 4 not being done by Vivid? The cost proposal very explicitly says that the rates are only for items 1 and 2.
Yep. I don't remember which one is which. The geotechnical work is done by Vivid directly. The design plans themselves, they subcontract out to Wilson and Company.
Okay.
So Wilson is a subcontractor to Vivid in that instance.
And you have the labor rates for, I believe Wilson is then doing 3 and 4, and you have the labor rates, and you're comfortable with them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I don't want to belabor it, but I still am not 100% clear on the sidewalk issue. I thought I understood that you were saying first that as long as there's a sidewalk on one side of College, then we don't force a sidewalk on the other. And I'm wondering if we should just look at that more from the standpoint that it's in the vicinity of a school where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic at certain times of the day. And is there a way to just, or is it just too much of a property owner issue, or whatever it is, to try to do sidewalks on both sides? I know there's a stretch, and I didn't look to see exactly how much of a stretch on the south side that doesn't have sidewalks.
Let me try rephrasing what Leo said. So when we have street... So when we have streets that don't have any sidewalks, those get called out specifically in the contracts as something that is going to take a lot of design work for sidewalks. When we have streets that have patches of sidewalk, we consider that more incidental to the project. So as we come across, or as they're designing it and they come across areas that don't have sidewalks, they'll include the sidewalks, it just doesn't get called out specifically because it doesn't take as much design work. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's fair.
So to put it another way, again, because I'm still not quite, will we end up with sidewalks on both sides of college?
That is the, that is the goal.
The goal, okay. I just wondered if we had to look at some other kind of grant money or something to get that done, but if that's the goal, then I'm happy.
I was wondering if you can enlighten me a little bit more about the construction management piece of this? Is this more of like a, an outside entity managing the project rather than our own boots on the ground?
That, I'd have to, I don't have it in front of me. I think that's item one or two. Those are an as needed basis when we don't have enough boots on the ground to cover all the different construction that's going around town. So they, Vivid Engineering is working in town with the school district to provide construction management services to a number of their projects and this proposal includes a part of that person's time that they can be split between the school and the city to help us when we need overflow. So that's why that one is shown more as an hourly rate than a not to exceed cost.
Okay. Okay, that helps because I don't remember leasing that before. Councilmember Schmisher?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good. Any other questions? Councilmember Tracy?
This is just a minor question in that memo regarding this. There's a date in that third paragraph that I think may not be correct. 2A projects that were approved for survey at the April 20th, 2023 meeting, I just wonder if we have a correction on that.
I think that was actually February 20th, 2023.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we'd like to entertain a motion that would include approving the consent agenda and agenda, but moving item 8C to the regular agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda while moving item 8C to the regular.
Second?
There has been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemmerich?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Leo, for being here for further enlightenment and knowledge. We always appreciate that. Ryan, if we could have an administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, you have the written report in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions. There is one item that's not in the administrator report, just an update for council. I'll be meeting with Pueblo Bank and Trust and some citizens in the neighborhood regarding the Maverick subdivision, the lot on Latigo tomorrow, so we'll be doing a, or the bank is hosting an open house on that, so I'll be participating in that to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions regarding the administrator's report.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Administrator Stevens, could you provide a little bit more context about the number of C Click Fix requests that have been completed by Public Works? Right now it says four and I'm just wondering out of what universe, how many C Click Fix requests have there been?
Yeah, we're working on getting those numbers, so I'll provide those to you probably tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, we're going to move on to the agenda. We're going to go ahead and take on item 8C, which was moved from the consent agenda and this is concerning the reconstruction of Reynolds Avenue and this is a project for Pyramid Construction.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The item for Reynolds Avenue, we put it out to bid, we got some very good pricing back. We were very happy with the pricing that we got from Pyramid. There are some considerations here. So we, when we originally designed the, the project, we designed it with the idea that in the past, the ditch company had asked us to try and keep stormwater out of, out of the ditches. So we designed it with piping and curb and gutter. We've since heard from the ditch company as well that, you know, they, they have some other considerations they would like us to take in considering, which includes consent from each of the shareholder owners along Reynolds, easements regarding the maintenance obligation for the ditch and I think we're, we're happy to try and make an attempt, but I don't want to delay the project. So what we're, what we're proposing tonight is to go ahead and pass the, the approval, the award to Pyramid Construction as it's designed here, but if we cannot get the consent from the shareholders in a timely fashion, very similar to what's going on with Maverick right now, we don't want to get to a point where we have many shareholders who have signed on, but we may have one or two holdouts. What we're proposing is removing the piping from the project and removing the curb and gutter from the project and moving forward with the rest of the design.
So, so please clarify that, and I'm sure that Manny will, will add more comments when he, this is his turn to speak, but there, ditch companies asking that we gain consent of all the shareholders to move forward and then what about the easements?
They're asking for an easement from everybody as well. You know, we'd have to get an easement for the, the pipe ditch.
From each property owner? And what is the requirements, Catherine, when we do a project like this, when it comes to ditches and doing ditch work, what, what are we obligated to do?
So this is not my area, just so you know, this is, Cory's been dealing with the ditch company and the ditch company's attorneys, I'll just be frank about that. It's my understanding that the ditch is currently running as of this weekend. You cannot prevent water from reaching the people who have rights within the ditch. My understanding is this is a lateral ditch, is that correct?
That is correct.
Not the main ditch? And I think there's some ambiguity as to whether or not the lateral is part of the ditch system or a separate part, but I think the city has, please correct me, I think the city has offered up a solution that would keep the water running during the project so that no one has denied their water. Is that accurate?
That is, that is correct. We've had meetings with the contractor. Leo hosted an open house last week and I'll let Leo get up and talk a little bit about that as well. The, the benefit of the piping and the curb and gutter is not to the benefit necessarily of the city but to the ditch. You know, several years ago, the ditch company asked us to keep stormwater out of the system. That was what this was attempting to do, but if we can't move forward without, in a timely fashion, we will remove that from the project.
So it'll be just like it was 50 years ago, no pipe and gutter?
Yep, that's correct.
Instead of moving forward and being, taking this opportunity to do the project right?
Correct.
Leo, can you tell us how the, well, number, well, two things. The conversations that have been had with the company about ensuring that each of the shareholders gets their lateral water and how that's going to look and how did the open house go? How many people came and what were the reactions that were from that?
Yeah. In terms of the lateral water, the contractor, the contract stipulates that we have to maintain water flow. We can't stop the water, the lateral can't be shut off, those things can occur. The contractor's intent is to essentially bypass pump short pieces of the lateral and work their way upstream, so they would bypass pump two to 300 feet at a time, lay the pipe, put the water back into that pipe without ever stopping the water.
You're just going to do little segments at a time?
Yep, starting from Fremont Drive, work your way north kind of thing.
Does this company have experience in doing this type of project?
Yes, they've done this type of work before. So the, the open house was very well attended. I was very surprised. We did not have a lot of feedback ahead of the meeting, Facebook calls, emails, anything. I would say we had probably 40 to 50 people in attendance. Ted Dell and myself were there representing the city. We answered a lot of questions, talked to everybody that wanted to talk to us and had a concern about the project. I don't recall speaking to any owners or residents along the street that had concerns about the proposal for the ditch water or anything, we were working in those lines. Most of the concerns were related to, you know, what about my landscaping that's in the right of way? How's my driveway going to be impacted? How will I get in and out of my house during construction? Those type of things were the big concerns and questions that we helped answer that day.
Okay. And any other questions for Leo while he's up here? I do have one. I have a feeling that perhaps the ditch company might ask, well, why can't we construct, do this construction after the ditch is shut off and so the water doesn't play into this? What would be your reaction to that request?
Two things come to mind for me. First, the water main work is ongoing, so the road is going to be left in, in kind of a temporary condition for an extended period of time until we can come back.
Can I just pause right there?
Yep.
That's what's happened at Rose Avenue?
Yep.
And the residents hate that.
Yep, not popular.
They hate that.
The second would be the, the bid document that we proposed was specific to a start upon, you know, essentially right away. So we would have to go back to the contractor and work with their availability to complete that work. There's no guarantee that they would honor those prices on a different timeline than what was stipulated in the contract.
What about the laying of asphalt during the cold winter months itself?
Yep, I mean, that could certainly be an issue too, you know, there, we would be constrained on the actual paving window on when we could get asphalt to finish the project.
Leo, can you remind us what the construction timeframe is for start to finish?
Yep. The contract stipulates 120 calendar days for work if all three alternates are selected, which I believe is what's proposed since we got good pricing, which would put it at essentially a May 1st start date if it were approved tonight by the time we got contracts and things on place. So May, June, July, August, essentially, you'd be looking at early September, Labor Day should be complete and open.
Excellent, thank you, Leo.
Yep.
Let's go ahead and call Manny, call him up to address City Council. Manny, you'll have your three minutes.
Did you say three minutes or 30 minutes? I didn't hear you for sure.
When the yellow light goes on, it means you have 30 seconds left.
First of all, my name is Manny Cole and I am the president of the Hydrally Irrigating Ditch Company. I'd like to say, first of all, this project is something that I think is very, very beneficial to the community. Piping and getting the stormwater out is absolutely wonderful. I really support that and I really support widening the street and the sidewalk on the other side. I kind of wish you had a lateral on the other side piped as well. The only thing that I have a real concern about is the way the project came down. I was informed of the, wanting to put the water line up and underneath the hydralyte ditch with a crossing of the ditch and we got that all taken care of. The next thing I heard was we had a contractor's meeting, a bid, a bid meeting and the plans were laid out and I didn't even have a copy of the plans. So normally when something's done in an agriculture community, we have lead time on it and it is done in the wintertime construction so that this company doesn't have to pipe around. Each, each lateral or each resident to move the pipe or in the water to someone all the time. The ditch company's responsibility is we, their stockholders, they pay their assessment and we have to provide them water and it's a mutual ditch company. So therefore, if they don't get their water, they can be a little upset with the ditch company and could actually file suit against us. As far as the number of people who are opposing or not opposing, I'm not opposing the project. I'm just saying in the future, because we're in an ag community, let's don't do construction in the summertime. If there's enough people who want this project, and it is very nice, I would like to see the city go ahead and go all the way through Old East Canyon and pipe every one of the laterals and keep the stormwater out. The problem in the long term is that if you put a pipe in, you have to maintain that pipe. If something happens to that pipe, then the one who installed it is usually the one that has to take care of it. And that puts the city maybe in a position where if it isn't installed properly and silts in, then we have an issue and we've already talked, Leo and I, about hydrojetting and trying to keep it out with a number of access points that you have into the ditch and I think that part will, should be workable, but I haven't had the opportunity to have an engineer, look at the engineering plans to determine the grade, the type of pipe and whether it will be a load bearing capacity for the driveways along the way on, on the west side of Reynolds. So those are all things that are up in the air and as long as, I've read the contract here, the denim portion of it, it goes into it and says the ditch company will not shut off their head gates, the water will continue to run. As long as the contractor knows that, I think that's fine. I do have more, but I'm out of time, so I'll just say that I'm in support.
Manny, go ahead, go ahead and go just a little bit longer.
I am in support of the project. I just say in the future, we need to work together instead of this piecemeal and I understand our difficulty more than anyone else here about not having our labor, our labor, our people involved. You were short an engineer, you were short a project, you're, you're short two positions there and when this was put together, those two, those individuals weren't there, your new ones are now and I really recognize that. I'm just saying, in the future, let's work together instead of try to do construction in the summertime when water's running. The problem is your contractor's going to charge more for not only that, but for the groundwater that comes underneath that project. So there's lots of things there that could be done differently and let's look at that. As far as liability in the long term, if that pipeline, water line to those individuals doesn't work, then we have a real issue and I can address that at a later time with, with your engineers and city administration on a little pipeline out east of here in the middle of the Home Depot parking lot. I don't want to go through this again and so that's the reason I would like to be involved on the front end of these construction projects.
All right, thank you, Manny.
With that, thank you very much.
We appreciate your comments, we appreciate your passion and the knowledge that you bring. I also would like to reiterate that we have had already since Leo has been here, just tremendous success, Leo's professionalism and knowledge in this industry as well. We are really, really lucky to have Leo on board and I foresee a good working relationship between you and Leo moving forward into the future as we do more projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion from council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is actually for, for Mr. Cole and I'm sorry, you just sat back down, but...
I have a question for you, Manny.
Apologies. I just wanted to seek clarification on, are you supportive of the project moving forward as is or are you supportive of the, the project with kind of the caveat that Administrator Stevens mentioned with regard to potentially halting the project or removing the pipe and curb and gutter if we don't receive the easements and the agreements from all of the ditch shareholders by a certain date? I just want to make sure that I understand what, what your support specifically relates to. Thank you.
I don't know exactly what you're asking as far as the easement is concerned. The main stem is my more basis concerned. The lateral going down belongs to all the stockholders on that lateral from the point of the head gate all the way across Highway 50 or Frentis Road and across that and there are other users cleared down by the Humane Society and even further east. They also use that same lateral off of Reynolds and quite frankly, the lateral west of Reynolds on Fields also serves some of those people. So as long as the engineer knows that the water can be transferred and keep going across Highway 50 and down, there's not an issue. If we block that, then we have other people involved and I, I tried to calculate how many people we're talking about, approximately 45 on each of those stems, so you have three times 45 is the number of people involved. Just on Reynolds on the west side... Just on Reynolds on the west side, you're only looking at 45 to 50. Those individuals, it's going to be an improvement to their system as long as it functions and works properly. And so I can't see where they would be upset unless somebody, we have a problem and the water is shut off for more than three or four days. The value of the products produced on that side is less agriculture than on the east side. And mainly, you're talking to their gardens and lawns at the most. And so with the improvement, the infrastructure on all the laterals in East Canyon is really deteriorated and is very bad. So what you're doing here is really improving that for those individuals. And as long as you can keep them happy with their water, I don't see a real problem. And as long as the system works, we don't want to throw out something that's working now and the new system not work and clog up. If it's put on great and done right, and Wilson Engineering has been around for a while, so hopefully, they've engineered this properly and the contractor will put it into specs. We normally would require, if it's on the main stem, we'd have an engineer there observing what is being done. And in this case, apparently, we don't, so we did talk about that with legal counsel.
The city will have an engineer, though.
You will have one there.
Yes.
I understand that. We've talked about that, yes. Okay? Sometimes it takes two to protect each other, all right? Okay, does that answer your question?
I think so. Administrator Stevens, does that answer your question with regard to your proposal?
So Manny, I understand you had a meeting earlier today where you were asking for owner sign-offs and, you know, consents and things like that. Are you waiving that now? You're not asking for that now?
I have a list here of the people that attended your meeting. And what I thought I would do is I would go and talk to a few of those individuals personally and find out if they're in support of it. I have not heard any negative contacts, negative conversations about that. I would say that, yes, I'm probably wavering that. The improvement, there's two things to look at. If you hold up the project and you take away the stormwater part that you're putting in and you rebid it, it's going to come back higher yet, even if it's done in the wintertime. Had you done it before and had it done to be in the wintertime, it would be less than what it is today by doing the workaround with the water. So that's the first thing that I see that is the negative part. The positive part is, my gosh, if you can put that in as designed and get the stormwater out, the problem is the stormwater's going to go on the other side of the street, still go down, and you're still going to have an issue, and it'll eventually accumulate at the Rose Avenue area, which you are currently under construction with, too. And hopefully, it will be taken care of there with that system. It will be adding additional water, but that's the way it is, okay?
So Manny, before everyone here at this council and with Leo, our Public Works Director, and Ryan Stevens, our administrator, I want to tell you that it is my commitment that we make sure that ditch water remains running for our shareholders along Reynolds during that project. We know that's important. We know it's essential, and we are trying our best to make that happen, and this is a strong commitment on our part.
You just went through a lot of time with the Arbor Ward. Without that water, there would be no trees there.
We are all on the same page.
Very good. Are there any more questions for me? No?
Thank you again, Manny. Also want to thank our staff, our Public Works, Kristy Gotham and Leo. The communication on this project, I feel, has been excellent in seeing the maps that have been put out, the notifications to the public that's been put out, and also Leo and Ted for talking to 40 to 50 people at a location that was right next to their neighborhood so that you could really answer their questions individually. Really appreciate the work that has been done. I believe invitations were sent to every single person on the street. Maybe if you could enlighten us a little more?
Yeah, that's correct. I think we mailed invitations to everybody on the project limit, so. It was kind of a trial, so we were really happy with how it went. It was, you know, hopefully, it solved a lot of problems there that we don't come up when we actually get down to building it, right? You put a name to a face, you hear about a problem ahead of time, we can hopefully work around it a little bit easier, so. It was good. It was good to see the community really turned out and had a lot of support and good questions, so I think.
That is a lot of people.
When we get, you know, to the next project, we'll probably try to repeat and do the same thing and see if we can, you know, get the same momentum.
I just wanted to recognize that that was a lot of work to make all of that happen. It'll continue to be a lot of work as the project goes forward, but I believe it is a good investment, and that's the right way we want to see things done. So thanks for making sure that it happens that way.
Welcome.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
So Madam Mayor, I just, I'm seeking clarification myself. The, we are, what we're being asked to approve is the project as presented in our packets. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And that does include the stormwater piping?
It does.
Thank you.
We can take a motion?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I'll be glad to make that motion, Madam Mayor and Council. I move that we approve awarding the contract of pyramid construction for bid 26-23-2A Reynolds Avenue reconstruction.
Second?
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call of vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and again, thank you, staff. We are on item 10A now, and this is an ordinance referral to committee for the deletion of Title 8, Chapter 8.40, the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, as per our charter, we're referring a potential ordinance to a committee meeting. This is to remove Title 8, Chapter 8.14 regarding abatement of dangerous buildings. When we adopted the new building code a couple of years ago, there was a provision in there that addresses this, and, you know, so we're removing items from code that's no longer relevant. And we'll get into the details of what that means and everything else that goes along with that during the general government meeting.
Any questions for Ryan? I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we refer to general government meeting for May 3, 2023, the ordinance for a deletion of Title 8, Chapter 8.40.
So we are not voting on this ordinance. We're just referring it to committee for further.
Voting to refer.
Further discussion and learning, just for clarification. So there's been a motion to refer it to committee?
Second.
And a second to refer it to committee. Any discussion? Call of vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is item 10B, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 5, Series 2023, entitled, "A Resolution Supporting the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Applications for Various Projects Within Canyon City."
And again, I'll ask Leo Evans to come up. Seems to be his podium tonight. This is a CDOT grant process, Transportation Alternatives Program. They need a letter of support in order to submit an application, and I'll pass it over to Leo to talk about what we're trying to do here.
Yep. So this program comes up once every three years through CDOT. This is for fiscal years '24, '25, and '26, and in each year, they have somewhere between $2.5 and $3 million to spend in the entirety of whatever region this is, Region 2, I think it is, for CDOT. So we prepared four draft applications for this program. The first two were existing programs and projects that were funded through TAP, the US-50 pedestrian project, which we talked about earlier this month, which is a few hundred thousand dollars short of being a complete project. So we did put in a request to fulfill that project in fiscal year '24. We also put in a request for the US-50 East lighting project, which is another project that's in the works. We just met with Black Hills last week on that. The third application we put together was for the continuation of bumpouts on Main Street. This would be for the 700 and 800 block of Main Street. I believe those were originally included in a previous grant application the city submitted through a different program that actually awarded the bumpouts here at Main and Third. And then the fourth project was titled The Third Street Connector, but it's one that I saw envisioned in the 2021 comprehensive plan, which was a larger pedestrian connection between Main Street and the Riverwalk. So kind of from US-50 south to the Riverwalk, along the Third Street corridor and through the parking lot to make that a little bit more pedestrian connection friendly and tie in with the other work on Third and Main. So, yeah, really, the programs come with an 80% federal, 20% local match, so there's a local match required on each of these projects if they are selected. To be honest, we're probably asking for much more than we could ever expect to get out of these programs. You know, we've historically gotten a couple hundred thousand dollars in each fiscal year out of each of them. So not that it's necessarily bad to submit more than you have, because there'll be other programs and other opportunities for those projects, but I'm trying to think what else. They are, applications would be due Friday, so the signed resolution of support would be one of the last pieces of that. And then we would hear back from CDOT later this summer, probably in July, with a preliminary decision on any of these projects.
Do you know how competitive it will be in seeking these grants?
How competitive it'll be?
Yeah.
I suspect it'll be very competitive, yeah. It'll, like I said, it's, we'll be competing against all of Region 2, so you'll have some of the larger communities like Colorado Springs and Pueblo will be part of that pool as well.
Okay.
Yep. We've been successful in the past. We've gotten money through them before, so.
Absolutely. It's exciting, and I really appreciate you taking the initiative to apply for this extra grant money. It would be really exciting, anything we could get to help improve Canyon City's infrastructure. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks so much for the work that you've done on this, as well as all of the other resolutions and proposals that you had before us this evening. I wanted to make a pitch for a slight tweak in the priority order. Right now, they are in priority order as Public Works Director Evans presented them. And personally, I think that the Third Street Connector, in terms of the pedestrian connection between Clock Tower Plaza and the Arkansas River, is, should be a higher priority than additional bumpouts on Main Street. And just wanted to make that pitch to see if the rest of city council will agree.
Have you asked the business owners on that section of the block? Because I, I know they want to see improvements on their block down there. And I saw that you're including that block of, like, they're going to be thrilled that they're going to, I mean, they're going to have to include fixing the street as well, but they want those wider sidewalks, and they're feeling very gypped and neglected that we haven't taken care of them already. So I guess that would be.
I have not specifically asked the business owners. I have heard from many people that the bumpouts are not something that they support or that they like, so the idea of adding more, I think, is somewhat up for debate. And personally, I think that the connection to the river and that Third Street nonpedestrian is something that should be of a higher priority. But I certainly would be very interested to know about the specific business owners on 8th Street and would want to seek their input, obviously, as to what they'd like to see and how they think that their businesses could best be supported by the city.
Yeah, and I think we'd all agree that the bumpouts, as were done by earlier administration, aren't ideal, but we know they need tweaking as well. But, and the question is how they are in relation to those wider sidewalks, because those wider sidewalks have been transformational in allowing outdoor seating for our restaurants and having that outdoor ambiance, and it's saved the bacon of our businesses during COVID as well. So I think there's a lot of things to consider. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Leo, what role does, if we, we intend to submit these projects in this priority order right now, I mean, that's what we're talking about, but that, what role does our designation of priorities play in CDOT's decisions?
I would say, you know, CDOT will consider our grants in the order that we prioritize them. So they'll, you know, they'll score our grants independently, but if they've got enough funding to support two Canyon City projects, they're going to take the top two on the list and kind of work in that order. So it is important. I highly doubt we would ever receive all four of these. That would be a big stretch and count on a lot of people not applying in the rest of the region, which I doubt would happen, but, so, yeah, some of those later ones are probably not likely to be funded.
Councilmember Tracy?
So I just wondered if Leo or Ryan wanted to talk a little bit more about why this priority was selected, just from staff point of view?
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit. The first two were easier for me, since we already had money, and they were just short money, trying to get those over the finish line. The way I differentiated between the additional work on Main Street and the Third Street Connector was that we had previously pursued grants for the continuation of Main Street. So to me, that was a higher priority because it had been pursued previously, whereas the Third Street was kind of a first time we've ever tried to attract funds for that project.
From a granting standpoint, you may see more preference points for the bumpouts if they're a little bit higher, because we have applied for grant funding before, so because CDOT has seen it before, they're, you know, they may look at it a little bit differently than a brand-new project.
It's also completing a project that's already been started, and Phase 2 of that project is going to be taken care of, and so it would make a natural sequence that would go to Part 3. Of course, if it did, if we magically got all the money, we would need to have a lot of businesses and the public participate in how that would look, so that we make sure that we're doing right by our people. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Stein?
The Third Street Connector, have we ever investigated grants that are available for walkability? Because I know of at least one, a national one, the AARP. They award a lot of grants for walkability. There might be some other, because from the standpoint of CDOT, their main concern is probably 50, and so they might be more likely to award us grants that, like the lighting along with the pedestrian crossing. But the Third Street Connector, that's definitely walkability to get people down. So maybe there's, and I'm sure Brandy knows about the AARP ones, but it just seems like there's a lot of them, and they don't seem to be, some of them, they don't get many applications for. We might have a better chance with them if we don't, yeah, I mean, if you don't get this one.
I think there's still a lot of design work, too, before we ever do the, like, what's planned. There is super high vision. There's not a lot of detail on that Third Street Connector yet, what that could look like.
I would like to just jump in and say, I kind, I do agree with Amy, and, because I think that Third Street Crossing is extremely important, one for downtown, but, you know, we have so many people go to our park system, and if we give them an easier access from our park system right there to get to our downtown, I really think that that should be one of our higher priorities as far as getting things done.
Leo, this is just south of Highway 50, correct? Because we've got the pedestrian crossing project that.
Yep.
This fall, that's going to take care of the Third Street Crossing itself. And then north of Highway 50, we already have some grant work for some work up there, correct?
That's correct. This, the TAP application is from 50 south to the Arkansas Riverwalk.
Yep.
Thank you so much for that clarification. The way that it was worded with regard to the connection between the Clock Tower Plaza and the Arkansas Riverwalk, I thought that it was that connection piece. So thank you so much for clarifying that. I'm okay with it as written.
Okay. I think the end of the day is, we recognize we probably won't get grant money for that. We're going to try, but we're going to keep trying more and more opportunities, it sounds like, so keep up the great work. And let's keep our fingers crossed. We do need to have a motion to approve this, however.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 5, Series 2023, Support for Transportation Alternative Program Applications.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call of vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. We have our last item on the agenda now. That is item ten C, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution Six, Series 2023, entitled "Establishing the Red Canyon Park Trails Committee."
All right, real quickly, this is coming right back to you after our general government meeting earlier this month. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, I didn't print that one. I believe the only item that changed from the draft that was presented at that meeting was item three D. I did make a slight modification to that section to have it include broad public outreach, I believe was the term I used, rather than just the targeted kind of stakeholder meeting. I think in the cover memo, I maybe also acknowledged our other discussion about the size of the membership to suggest that, should we get a large pool of applicants that are qualified and want to broaden this from five to seven or nine or whatever that is, we could come back with an amended resolution at that time.
And after the general government meeting, and it's in the memo, Councilmember Schmisher also suggested maybe some language regarding user groups or making sure that we're not overloaded in one particular user group as we select that committee. We could potentially add some language to number four if that's the desire of council.
Councilmember Schmisher, do you have any language suggestions that you would like to see to accommodate that request?
I did not come prepared with language suggestions. I'm more than happy to make one, though. But only if that's something that council is wanting to consider.
Well, I definitely like the idea. We always like to make sure that there's equal representation from all user groups.
I think we could perhaps just say the committee will be composed of, it currently says, three Fremont County residents, of which at least one must be a city resident and two Canyon City council members. I think we could say will be composed of three Fremont County residents, of which one must be a city resident and ensure a balanced representation of Red Canyon user groups.
To ensure?
To ensure.
Catherine, do you have any? Does this sound good?
Okay.
Like motion?
Yeah, I would.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Resolution Six, Series of 2023, establishing the Red Canyon Park Trails Committee with the amendment suggested by Councilmember Schmisher in item four.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just want a little clarification. I noticed in the memo that it sounded like there'd be like a community kind of a meeting first before we solicit applications. Is that right?
I think we'll probably try to time something ahead, one of, ahead of one of the council meetings, maybe a half an hour, an hour before a council meeting when we get some maps prepared and have some application packets. We'll just have a walk-in open house, come get information. Here's an application if you want to apply. And then however long the application period goes after that, we'll close it down and bring them back to you for interviews.
Thank you, appreciate that. Councilmember Schmisher and then Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
I would just recommend in the application packet that we have, you know, primary user group and then allow them to identify so that we have that information when we are considering the applicants. Thanks.
And I would just comment that after that open house meeting, if we have fifty people show up that have a burning interest, that we can reconsider the number of people assigned to the committee at that point.
Burning interest. Okay, yeah, so any, oh, Councilmember Worthington?
This can wait until after we vote it. But I was just going to say that this is good timing for getting this committee going because the Gold Canyon Byway Group is meeting with CDOT to talk about. And Rex has been nice enough to agree to go to that meeting. So I think this is all going to tie in in a very timely manner.
Yeah, so they have received grant money to do a connecting trail from Purple Creek down to Red Canyon or something like that. Something's connecting to Red Canyon with the Gold...
Yeah, I was just trying to look for it myself, so, yeah, so the timing is good.
Thanks for bringing that up. And I will now call for a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy, did you have something?
Yeah, I would just like to have you guys come up, introduce yourselves real quick. And we want to say thank you for joining us this evening. This is our, this is our Boy Scout group, and they have been fantastic. They were learning about government and, and just, yeah, just come up, come up to the mic, introduce yourself and, you know, say whatever you want. But thank you very much for coming, guys. This is fantastic.
Well, first off, I'd like to say thanks for inviting us. I'm the senior patrol leader, I'm David Masters, and I don't have really anything to add on, so I'll hand it to these guys.
I'm Chase Messer. It's a pleasure to be here. I learned a lot. That's it.
I'm Peyton Wheeler, and I learned a lot. And I'd just like to thank you guys for having us.
I'm Aaron Johnson, and I just thought it was nice being here. And it was nice listening to everything.
Curtis Sawyer, and I want to say thank you that it was an opportunity to listen. Thank you.
My name's Leo Evans, and I would like to say thank you for inviting us.
And I'm Mike Abbott. I'm the assistant scoutmaster with the troop.
Excellent. Well, I foresee some great futures here and hope that you will consider running for elected office someday. You guys are on your way to make excellent leaders. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Have a great day, guys.
All right, well, that's a great note to adjourn this meeting.